Let's call this committee, the whole meeting for February 18th, 2025, to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the order?
Alderman Pereira.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Donnell.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Tolliver.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderwoman Bade.
Here.
Alderman Lash.
Present.
Alderman Warman.
Here.
Mayor Irvin's present.
With approval of the minutes of Tuesday, February 4th, 2025. Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Lash. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Mr. Muhammad.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's a couple of things under the mayor's report tonight. It was eight years ago we made this last announcement of a new city website. Eight years later, we're excited today to usher in a new era of engagement and communications and technology.
Everyone, I'm Mayor Richard C. Irvin, and I'm excited to cut this ribbon here today to introduce you to the future Aurora. Our city continues to move forward at the speed of light. Each day, we're working hard to provide our residents with best-in-class services in addition to technology and innovation to enhance quality of life. Today, we're proud to unveil a project that's been a long time coming, a new City of Aurora website. So let's cut this ribbon for the future of Aurora. Countdown with me. Three, two, one. Aurora's new website is user-friendly, convenient, and ready to serve you. The site has four main categories at the top of the page to help you get to where you need to go. The homepage also offers dynamic buttons, quick links to top tasks, plus news and events happening in our great city. We've also launched three subsites for our more robust departments and divisions. Our public safety departments, police, fire, and emergency management all have their own sites dedicated to keeping our city safe. The Phyllis Park Zoo also stands alone with information on zoo hours, zoo events, and activities for visitors. And our animal care and control division, which set a record for adoptions and transfers in 2024, now has its own site to make the adoption process even easier. This is a new day for the City of Aurora. Join us as we celebrate this historic milestone and introduce you to the new City of Aurora website. Welcome home.
I think we'll have applause for our communications team for taking this last year to launch that. I want to bring out our chief communications and marketing officer, Tony Martinez, and our communications director, John Zagul. Come on out, guys, just for a quick bow. They've worked for this last year with all of our departments, with the IT department, to launch this new era of communication and engagement. The website is absolutely amazing. You can log on now. It just launched today. And these guys and their team have definitely done a yeoman's job of carrying this ball down the field and across the finish line. Is there anything you want to say?
I just want to thank you. It's been a team effort really to get this done. John Zagul, since he started the city, this is something that, a project that he inherited. So it's been over two years in the making. Thank you for all the departments that worked together to kind of refine, refine all of the content on the website. And this is just the beginning. We'll continue to refine the content as our visitors, as our residents interact with our website. And this really revolutionizes the way that residents interact with the city. So we think this is really a two-part step with the first part is our website launching and then here next month with our new 3-1-1 customer service. And those two pieces of software will be an integral piece in the way residents interact with the city right at their fingertips through their phones, through their computers. So really excited as we launch this website here today. Thank you.
Round of applause. Tony Martinez did some amazing work. So make sure you log on. If you have any questions, please direct them to the team. But we're excited to watch this new era of communications and engagement. So this was our virtual ribbon cutting we held today, which marks our 11th. We did the first six ribbon cuttings at Fox Valley Mall to kick off January.
Everyone.
We're here at Fox Valley Mall with our first six ribbon cuttings of the year.
So it is my absolute honor to give this plaque to NBC Wellness and Strands. Plaque is for the grand opening of Los Inzurcanas. Congratulations on opening your business. This plaque here is for grand opener Top Trends. Congratulations on opening your business in Aurora. Now this here is for the grand opening Cala Lila. Congratulations on opening your business here in Aurora. Signature Salon, congratulations on opening your business, another business here in the City of Aurora. Welcome home yet again, my brother. I'm proud to give it one more time for the grand opening of the new Fox Valley Mall Catherine's Place. Congratulations on opening yet another business in the City of Aurora.
And let's count down nice and loud.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Welcome to Cala Lila. Six new businesses, and it hit the mark for 50 minority and women-owned businesses inside Fox Valley Mall. Big round of applause for the mall. You can see black-owned businesses, Latino-owned businesses, or our Pan Asian community-owned businesses and women-owned businesses. Definitely, the mall has done a yeoman's job of making certain that the diversity and ownership is there at the mall. We're going to ask the mayor to come down. We have our senior development director, leasing director of Fox Valley, Ms. Patty Ryan here today. Let's give her a round of applause as she comes down. Patty, come on down. We have an exciting announcement tonight. There are currently 10 black-owned businesses at the mall. And Patty's done a great job. She herself has really put on the work and brought in over 60 businesses as the sole person in her department to the mall in the area. Big round of applause. 60 businesses. And Patty has an announcement to make about the newest black-owned business as they wake their way into the council chambers. Patty?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Fox Valley Mall does pride itself on diversifying our clients and our retailers to match the City of Aurora's diversity. We are super proud of all of our accomplishments there. In December, I received a phone call from one of my tenants who knew of a small business that was getting ready to relocate. And she was recommended Fox Valley and the City of Aurora. When I first met Delisha, I fell in love with her immediately. She is an honest person. She's a hard-working person. She is my grandmother, not literally, but that's who she reminds me of. Her menu would put my grandmothers to shame. We are extremely excited to announce that Delisha will be opening at Fox Valley as the sole spot, and she has walked.
And so, and so for the last nearly a decade, the most popular soul food restaurant in the western suburbs, we grubhub there every week, we doordash every other week, was located in Bolingbrook. They closed down in Bolingbrook, and Mandy's Soul Food Kitchen will now open in the City of Aurora as the sole spot at Fox Valley Mall. Delisha Bowling is here, the owner of the sole spot at Fox Valley Mall.
So this here is the first time in partnership with our Fox Valley Mall. It's a contract signed for the sole spot. Congratulations on securing your new restaurant in the City of Aurora. Welcome home.
Welcome home, Delisha. We're so excited that Mandy's now has relocated and rebranded as the sole spot here. Is there anything you'd like to say?
I just want to say I never felt this much welcoming and love from, you know, from everybody in the world. So I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you to the village. I have a team here. Selena, Omar, thank you so much. And I can't forget, can't even think of her name, but I thank everybody. I thank everybody. It's been great. I can't wait to open.
We can't wait for you to open.
Yes.
Another round of applause for the new sole spot. That will bring three black-owned eateries at the mall. There's Banana Pudding Twits. There's a new Catherine's Place. And now the sole spot, all three in the same quarter at the mall, thanks to the work of Patty and our team here. Thank you so much. Round of applause. We appreciate it. But wait, one more, one more, Delisha, before we're going to take a... We also want to recognize her for her stalwart efforts here in business development.
I'd like to honorably present the mayor's award of excellence to Patty Ryan, Senior Director, Local Leasing and Business Development for Fox Valley, for your dedication and commitment to business growth, retention, and expansion in Fox Valley and the Aurora community. You have made a vital difference to the lives of entrepreneurs and on Aurora's business landscape. Thank you very much for everything you do to make Aurora proud.
Over 60 businesses she's secured at the mall over the last couple of years. Let's take a picture. We'll put you in the middle, Mayor. And we also have our mayor's office of economic development. We're going to ask Omar and Selena, they've been so integral in this process, please come down for the photos. And anybody from Delisha's team that would like to come down, please come on down as well. So as we celebrate Black History Month, we shine a spotlight on black-owned businesses in Aurora and Delisha Bowling and the sole spot, the newest black-owned business in Aurora. All right, we'll do a group photo. All right, we're going to do a quick photo, everyone. Come on back. You guys come on down, come on down. We'll be announcing a ribbon cutting soon. Big round of applause for the new sole spot at Fox Valley Mall. The former Mandy Soul Food Kitchen in Bolingbrook has moved to the City of Aurora. As the mayor works his way back to the dais. We're going to, we're going to ask... Okay, we can just do one quick picture, one quick picture. Or we can take the picture and send it to you. There we go. Thank you so much to Mandy's, Delisha, and the entire team. The sole spot at Fox Valley Mall. Patty, thank you and the team. Another round of applause for the sole spot. As the mayor takes his seat, we want to make another announcement. As many of you know, we had such a shining star from Aurora pass away at the end of January. Young rising star in the comedic world. Got so much love from People Magazine, TMZ, and across the nation on his passing. Said he's on the route to becoming one of the Latin legends of comedy, Ken Flores, graduate of Eastborough High School. We will be hosting a street dedication ceremony this Saturday in Ken's memory. So we invite everyone out on the corner of Spice Bush and Fifth Avenue. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Now, I know we have a lot of folks here that showed up for the presentations and to welcome our new business here to the City of Aurora. So we're about to start our regular portion of the business now. So I want to give everybody an opportunity that aren't here for the regular part of the city council meeting, which is not nearly as exciting as welcoming new businesses to the city. I'll give you guys a few minutes to file out. Feel free to stay if you want to participate. We'd appreciate it. Otherwise, I see you have some little ones with you. Probably have to get them ready for school tomorrow. So I'll give you guys a few minutes to file out. All right, now at this point, we're going to the next section of the agenda, and that's for public comment. Madam Clerk, do you have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Will we read the rules of public comment, please?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the committee of the whole for up to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the committee of the whole shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Madam Clerk, call the first speaker wishing to offer public comment.
Guy Bodie.
Mr. Bodie, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Thank you. I didn't write anything down, but I just come to speak from my heart. I watched a lot of the committee meetings after it's happened at home when I get home from work. I'd like to read something here that Clerk just read. "The total time allotted for public comment during any government meeting is 30 minutes with the clock running only when a person is actually speaking." "The city council is not permitted..." "Not permitted..." "...to respond or interact with speakers during public comment as this is a time set aside to..." "Or for members of the public to provide their input, I'm sorry." "Three weeks ago or four weeks ago, I've seen a couple ladies come up here and rip into a couple old aldermen. Totally unfair, but that's okay. They can do that. That's their right." "When I saw Alderman Franco's wife come up here..." "You can look at me, Alderman Franco, if you'd like." "When I saw your wife come up here and publicly shame another person of the public over sham allegations with no proof from two years ago, that's disgusting." "When you stood up and berated her after she got done with her comments, that's disgusting." "I just read the rules to you. You even stood up and said, 'Censure me.'" "Has anybody here even raised the question of censoring him? If you have, raise your hand. I applaud you. Because if you haven't, I'm asking you to censure Alderman Franco for his comments after pretty much going after somebody from the public for speaking." "Is somebody going to go after me from what I'm going to say up here after I'm done speaking? I kind of welcome it, actually. I like it." "Unfortunately, nobody here is raising their hand. Alderman Seville, I thought you might. You're the senior alderman here on the council, pretty much. I have respect for you. But nobody else here seems to say anything. So I'm demanding you censure Alderman Franco for his comments after three or four weeks ago from Ms. Sandy Schmidt." "I could stand up here and say things without proof because it sounds good or it's the political season for it, but I'm not going to. So would you agree, Mr., I'm sorry, Alderman Franco, that you need to be censured? You can just go like this." "Nobody here is going to do anything about it, are they? We're going to see about it now, because now all the public in Aurora knows. Now we're going to see if you're going to actually do something."
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Susie Lopez.
Ms. Lopez, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Mayor Irvin, I watched the realtor's debate last week between you and Judd Lauch, where you outlined your three priorities for Aurora: Sea, Safety, Education, and the Economy. As mother and a business owner here in Aurora, I am very interested in each candidate's plan for our children. At one point in the debate, you said Judd took the name De Aurora Promise from you, but that's not true. Neither you or Judd came up with the name. After doing my own research, I learned that this is a national movement with over 400 other Promise Scholarship programs nationwide. And they all look like what Judd is proposing. True Promise programs offer scholarships for graduating high school seniors to attend community college or for vocational training. Mayor Irvin is trying to deceive us into thinking his children's savings account proposal is similar to a Promise Scholarship. It is not even remotely close. Under Mayor Irvin's plans, he will make a one-time deposit of $50 into a savings account for a kindergartner with no further plan to grow that money. So let's do the math. $50 over 13 years at a generous 5% interest rate is equal to $95. Or even better, $100 over the same time period will only be $191. This is not nearly enough for one college credit. And remember, his so-called promise will only benefit kindergarteners? What about the other kids, grade one through 12? So Mayor Irvin's promise is nothing more than half-baked, empty promise. We need a leader who will provide real opportunities for our kids and the community. The Promise Scholarship that Judd is proposing looks a lot like what other successful cities and states are adopting across America. They are doing so because the program works. It strengthens the local economy and provides real opportunities for the youth. Mayor Irvin, you are seeking a third term and say education is one of your priorities, S-E-E, right? It is embarrassing that you would present a simple children's savings account as your grand education plan. We're not buying into this. This is further proof that you have no good plans for our kids or our community. Your plan is and has always been about you. It is time for change. May God help us.
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Rick Lawrence.
Ms. Lawrence, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
I came up here to talk about our neighborhoods and particularly something that happened in my neighborhood just last week. And in particular, one person that we all know up here, we all worked with, Ken Maurice. We all know Ken as one of the most calm, most non-aggressive person that you'd ever meet. Ken got arrested in our neighborhood. Put in handcuffs, taken to the police station, and booked. You know what his crime was? He told some people not to put a Mayor Irvin sign in a property that he owned. Now, they want you to believe that Mr. Maurice, that you all know, came out spitting and swearing and yelling and running across the street like a madman. Have you ever seen Ken raise his voice? Anybody? That is the most calm person you have ever met. But he gets arrested, and then they put out a video, the mayor's campaign, about how insane this man was while the church-going people were putting out signs, even though their records are a little bit different. Now, Mr. Mayor, you never called the guy to straighten that situation out. Your people should have known better. It was his property. All you had to do is just, when he said, "It's my property. I don't want the sign in the yard." Take the sign, get in your car, and leave. Instead, they created an argument. And now, because they didn't want a damn sign in his yard, your campaign looks to destroy this man's life and cost him thousands of dollars in legal fees. Now, I want one person up here to say something bad about Ken Maurice and the history that we've all had with him. And tell me that that sounds like Ken Maurice running across the street spitting and swearing at people as not. He's a good neighbor. He's a good man, and he didn't deserve that. And I'm not here against anyone. For all your campaigns, I think you're all nuts. But, you know, when you put people in our neighborhood, they should respect our neighborhood. They should respect our neighbors. That's what's important. All this development, that's not the important stuff. It's the people that live in those neighborhoods, and those are good people, and they don't deserve to be treated like that. Mr. Mayor, you need to straighten that situation out, and you need to apologize to that guy. I wish he would file a $20 million lawsuit against the campaign because that was wrong, what happened to that man. And I hope that gets straightened out very quickly.
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker. You're done.
Ray Hall.
Mr. Hall, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Mayor Irvin, Aurora City Council, I spoke to this body a few months back and commented on the lack of decorum displayed after having the invocation. I noticed we didn't have a prayer today. Mayor Irvin, you are directly responsible for the tone that is set. You, sir, have sown discord and division on the council by allowing Alder Lady Smith and Alderman Franco to freestyle at will. They do exactly what de facto organization members do. They bully their fellow council members who simply dare to question anything. Alderman Franco was so far off base two weeks ago, and you did nothing to get order until Alderman Bug spoke up, and then, like a parent, you shouted at him to be silent. Now this has spilled into the public arena. Members of the public have began to getting into the fray. Well, sir, when you sow discord, eventually the chickens come home to roost. You give the middle finger to Mr. Ash last week, and you certainly did, speaks volumes. I don't have to say anymore. Then you turn it on Alderman Bug because he did what he always tries to do, which is the right thing. Lastly, the first time I spoke under your administration, it was to bring light to your planet to demote or replace Ken Maurice as the Director of Youth and Senior Services. Mr. Maurice resigned rather than to eventually have you soil his reputation. He took a cut in pay to go work for the township. Now, for the icing on the cake, last week, off your campaign workers concocted a story that only people who don't know Ken and those police officers who handled the situation poorly to be nice had Mr. Maurice arrested simply because he asked them to leave his property and not put up your campaign sign. It's admirable that your campaign gives work to individuals with sketchy pasts, but Ken was the wrong guy at the wrong time, at your most vulnerable time. Alderman Franco, have you reached out to your constituent, or do you need the king's permission to do so? At least show some concern. Mayor Irvin, maybe you can fix this like you did your girlfriend's case at the marijuana dispensary, where she actually did assault a security officer. Once again, sir, you have the opportunity to do the right thing. Will your character allow you to do so?
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Curtis Wilson.
Mr. Wilson, you have to miss speak beginning now.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. So I'm just coming to, number one, just make sure that I uphold a bit of accountability. So I was notified today by, like, I would say, seven or eight text messages regarding the fact I was in trouble because of my service. And so I just wanted to say that I do apologize if that is impacting our community. I'm more than happy to step down if need be. I care about our city. This is tough for me. I care about our city. I care to serve because I don't need a title to serve. And even if I do step down, from everything, whatever's necessary, I'm still gonna continue to serve. So it doesn't bother me that, you know, that may be something that can be spun some kind of way. I don't wanna hurt anybody up here on the dais. I haven't actually seen the video. I was just notified. So, again, in the spirit of transparency and accountability, many things we project and want you guys to do, I think it's also important for us to do. And so with that said, I just appreciate the opportunities. Several of the boards I'm on actually all have vacancies, so there's plenty of opportunity for people to apply. And then the one board that doesn't have a vacancy, I was just part of the group of like six people, because half the board was gone, and nobody had applied in so long. So, again, I don't need a title to serve. I'm happy to do whatever I can, whenever I can, because it's about service, it's about community. Again, I put myself on the same level of accountability that we want from you guys. So, again, I actually offered to definitely step down anytime anybody else wanted to show up. But whenever there's a need, it's just something about you gotta help. It's just one thing to give lip service, but how do you get involved? How do you positively impact the community? How do we bring down the temperature and the tone? I know we have the ability to present our requests to our government, but I just hate the divisiveness. I hate how we attack each of you. I hate how we attack one another. I just hate it with a passion, because that's not how you build. That's how you divide and destroy. I'm one that people, you know, they come to me, and I wanna connect them to things. So even as I'm on the boards, City Council, Mr. Mayor, I'm like, how can I get you connected? How can I take this opportunity and take two to multiply to four to 16? How do I grow that? And so I just wanted to say, again, I place myself on that same layer of accountability and transparency. And then I also would like to just acknowledge, from the Warming Center perspective, AID, and HACID, two great partners who have been here supporting us. HACID has given us the beds, the disco beds, the canvases, washout blankets and the blankets themselves. So, again, I wanna end on a positive note by acknowledging two good organizations that have helped us. So I'm at time. Thank you so much.
Madam Clerk, that appears to be the last speaker. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, that concludes our public speaking. Let's go on to the staff report. Animal Control and Care.
Find the remote. Good afternoon. My name's Cameron. Cameron DeVore. I'm the Animal Control Manager at the City of Aurora Animal Care and Control. I am here to give the long-awaited update on our volunteer program. It's been many months in the making. We are very excited to share the new information with you. So first, I wanna give you some background, because I know I haven't talked to all of you. So we did previously have a program. It was very bare bones. And we decided it was necessary to revise. We wanted to improve safety, clarify our expectations, and implement some structure into the program. The previous program was basically sign some paperwork, good luck, and just kinda set you free. So that can obviously cause some safety concerns and not create a...
Step a little bit closer to the mic. It seemed like either the mic isn't on or we can't hear your voice projecting. Thank you.
Is that better? Awesome. Okay. So, yeah, basically, we just wanted to improve the program. And that began, the process began last year. So now we are at the point where we're going to be accepting applications starting on this Thursday. So what's new? It's now a tiered program, so you'll start at a lower level, and as you grow in the program, you'll get more access to different animals that might have some more needs. We've improved our training protocols and updated our volunteer policies and procedures. We've implemented a color coding system, again, for safety, to make sure that everyone's handling the animals that they are safe with. And it is all being taken care of through Better Impact now, so you can track all your hours. You'll have access to all of your training through that program at all times. Volunteers will also be able to sign up for shifts, so we can ensure proper care for the animals throughout the whole week. The requirements are pretty much the same. We just kinda beefed them up so you can kinda know what you're getting into. So, again, 18 years of age or older, if you're 16 or 17, and you have a parent or guardian that wants to volunteer with you, as long as you're both approved, you're welcome to come in. We have our onboarding materials that need to be completed and an orientation with some training sessions in-house. We ask that a minimum of four hours be dedicated to our facility a month. That's just to make sure that everybody's staying updated, and we see you smiling faces around. We don't accept coordinated community service at this time, and applicants will be accepted on a case-by-case basis based on the operational needs of the shelter. So we don't know exactly what that's gonna look like until the program's running. But, you know, we're not gonna need 70 people to all come on on Monday, so there'll probably be a cap at some point. And then once someone leaves, that'll open a slot again. So the general process, there's about four steps. So there's step one and two go in hand-in-hand with each other. The applicant will submit their application, complete their materials, and submit to a background check. While that is happening, we will be processing their application, verify their eligibility, verify that all the supporting materials are completed, and then we'll assign them a track. There'll be more come down the road about the tracks. Once that's completed, they'll start their training process. They'll go to orientation. We'll do some mentor sessions, and then they'll be accepted. Once fully accepted, you're off to the races. You sign up for your shifts. You'll have access to more training to continue moving up in your program. So there's volunteer tracks. We have five. Our two main program tracks are Dog Paw and Meow Manor. Put cutesy names on them. Dog Paw is socializing and hanging out with our dogs, and Meow Manor is socializing with our cats. We have three specialty programs as well. These are built for individuals who have certifications or a lot of training in their expertise. So Glamour Paw, if someone has a grooming certificate, they'd be welcome to come in and help us groom the animals. Pet Picks, people who are well-versed in photography and videography would be able to be part of that program. And then Tranquil Tales, those that have training certificates for animals would be able to access that program. So there is that tiered design within the program. The two main tracks, you don't have to have any experience to join. So we wanna start you off at the lower levels, get you trained. We'll teach you about our facility, and then build you through the program. So each one is split into tiers. Dog Paw has four. Meow Manor has three. You have to meet specific training requirements and time within the shelter before you move up to the next levels. But we make sure that everybody has that at their disposal at all times. So, and if you don't feel comfortable moving up, you don't have to. So it's very, people can really decide how far they wanna go in the program. Like I said, also, we do have the color codes. So an animal is assigned color codes based off their behavioral and medical status. Each color code requires a little bit of training, so a shy dog might be a different training than, you know, a really happy-go-lucky jumpy dog. And then, as volunteers move up in their program, they'll gain access to more color codes. And, like I said, again, the training, the last program didn't really have any. So we really beefed that up. We wanna make sure that everybody's comfortable, safe, and we wanna prepare them for, you know, their life ahead as well. You know, we're all surrounded by animals, so if you can learn things from us and take it into your life, we're all for it. Continued education and optional trainings will also be made available to our volunteers. This is just our, to show our color coding system, so these signs are posted around the shelter. The cats have five colors. The dogs have six. Dogs are bigger and can, you know, be a little bit more difficult. So we decided to split up that second tier for them. But each volunteer will have access to this information. They'll receive training on the different information. So your blue animals are ones that you would feel comfortable with your kids, whereas your orange or red animals, you might need some more experience with. So the goal is, again, to promote safety and enhance the experience for both our animals and the volunteers coming in. So what can you expect? Wait times are gonna be, they're gonna vary, especially during the beginning of this program. We expect very high numbers of applicants. We already have a waiting list of 70. So we do expect, once that's put out onto social media, we're gonna receive some more. So we do look at everybody's application. We wanna make sure that everybody's well-trained before they get started in the program. And we're gonna accept small groups at a time because we don't want anyone to get lost in the shuffle. So it's gonna be a little slow building in the beginning, but we expect this to be a very prosperous and awesome program. Applicants will receive email communications through this period, updating them on the status. So if we haven't quite gotten to you yet, you know, we'll make sure that we let you know that we have it, and we're gonna continue moving through. And then, as you move through the application process, you will receive updates as well. Like I said, this is launching on Thursday. The application will be made available on social media. It will be made available on the new website. You can also, if you'd like, to join our interest list. Like I said, there's 70 on it currently. You can email the animal volunteer email, and I'll add you to it. Or that QR code takes you to our Facebook. It will be posted on Thursday, so you can get right to the link. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Burrow.
Yes, this is an issue that was brought to my attention by two individuals that contacted me. And one of them is very, very passionate about this and, you know, an animal lover. And so I know, I know some of the volunteers are very concerned when they were, when this was put on hold, and they're really anxious to get back and give their time for these animals. You'd be reaching out to those individuals that were previously volunteering?
Yeah, so I think, I believe the majority of our previous volunteers asked to be on the interest list, so they'll receive an email Thursday morning with that application link, so they can go to it, apply right away. And we didn't want to bring old volunteers into the new program because so much has changed. So we wanted to make sure that everybody moved through the same process, so everybody knows exactly what's going on. We didn't want it to be confusing. So, yeah, they will receive an email Thursday morning. If they decided not to be on the interest list, they can still either reach out to us or go on our Facebook, and that will be on there.
Thank you.
Alda Lash.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like Alderman Burrow, I've heard from quite a few residents. I appreciate you putting this program together after quite a bit of angst in the community. It looks like you've thought it all well-thought-out. One quick question. Have we changed our adoption procedures? I know another concern that some of the volunteers had is that people were not allowed to see the animal before adopting. Is that accurate?
No, people can see the animal. We reduced people going into the rooms just because of safety, and the animals got very stressed out. And we've seen a significant difference in our animals' behavior. And we don't get a lot of complaints about that. We, actually, our adoption numbers have increased since we started doing that. So we are still trying to figure out a happy medium. But as of right now, we just bring the animals out of the kennels for them, and just don't have people go into the kennel area.
Looks like you've put a lot of thought in this. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions or comments? Alda Smith.
So my son adopted a dog from there, and it was a great process. We were asked to limit the amount of people, which made very good sense, and the dog was brought into an area where, you know, we could just be around it and not a bunch of other dogs at the same time. So, but I know you have established this whole new model. I appreciate this. I think that, you know, this is a long time coming from a very, very, very busy facility that we have. So I appreciate the time and effort that you've put into this. I know that there were a lot of the old-time volunteers that were unhappy for one reason or another, but, you know, this is a new day. You've taken this to a different level, different, you now appear to have things really organized in. Hopefully, they can come back in under your organization and under what you've established. So thank you for doing what you've done for this facility, because it needed, it needed a facelift, and I believe you've given it, given it just that.
Alderman Franco.
So I just wanna say thank you. I know that the mayor and I met with a number of those volunteers. They'd been there for a long time, about six weeks ago, right? And they had concerns about the direction we were going. They made some suggestions, and the mayor and his office took those suggestions to heart and made some changes. Some of these changes are incorporated here right now, based on their suggestions. So thank you for listening. Thank you, Mayor, for doing that. We met with them again two days ago, and we told them about some of these changes, and they were very happy because now we're working the problem with everybody's inputs. So kudos to them, kudos to you guys, because it really is working out, because everybody had a say in the whole situation. So thanks again for both parties who do this.
Any other questions or comments? There have been none. Thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation. It was great. All right, let's go on to the next portion of the agenda. Committee reports. Chairwoman Smith, can you give the Building, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee report, please?
Yes, sir. The Building, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee met on February 12, 2025, and reviewed the following items. 24-1005, an ordinance annexing property located at 40 West 098 Galena Boulevard to the City of Aurora, Illinois 60506. 25-0076, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute an amendment to a design-phase engineering agreement in the not-to-exceed amount of $14,800 and execute a construction-phase engineering agreement in the not-to-exceed amount of $102,300 with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated. This resolution would also authorize the agency agreement with the State of Illinois for the rehabilitate Airfield Lightning Volt ARR-4915 and Replace Vault Generator ARR-5117 projects located at the Aurora Municipal Airport.
No objections. I'm going to consent. Just to make the record clear, that first item, 24-1005, is all, will be on consent as well. Next item.
Item number 250079, an ordinance...
I'm sorry. Alderman Seville, did you have a question? Okay, thank you.
We good? Item number 250079, an ordinance establishing a conditional-use plan development approving the Los Rosa Plan Description and amending Chapter 49 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Aurora, by modifying the zoning map attached thereto to an underlying zoning of R5 Multiple Family Dwelling District, R4 Two-Family Dwelling District, R2 One-Family Dwelling District for the property located at 550 Second Ave. and 545 through 563 East Benton Street. Consent?
No objections. I'm going to consent.
25-00...
I'm sorry. Alda Lash.
Sure, thanks. I don't have a problem with moving this to consent. I'm just wondering if we could get a short timeline and when this project will be completed, or a rough timeline.
Jill Morgan, staff for the city. I was gonna have Lori, the petition with AID, answer that.
Hi, I'm Lori Baker, President and CEO of the Association for Individual Development, or AID. When we get this final zoning approval, if we do, we'll be able to close with the funders and look to break ground in the spring, probably May or June, and it'll be a year-long construction project.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There have been none. No objections. I'm going to remain on consent.
Okay, next item is 250080, a resolution approving the final plot of lots 1 through 3 of Los Rosa subdivision located at 550 Second Ave. and 545 through 560 East Benton Street. And lastly, 25-0081. Was there consent there?
Consent.
No objections. I'm going to consent.
250081, a resolution approving a final plan for Lot 1 of Los Rosa subdivision located at 550 Second Ave. For the mixed juice development. Consent?
No objections. I'm going to consent.
That is all we have for the BZNE.
Thank you very much. Chairwoman Franco, can you give the Finance Committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee met on February 13, 2025, and reviewed the following items. 24-0913, a resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering agreement with Alfred Benish and Company in the not-to-exceed amount of $315,979, and the appropriation of $315,979 of MFT funds for the 2025-2026 bridge inspections.
Consent.
In addition to allocated MFT funds, this will allow for a contractual two-year extension for services from Benish.
No objections. I'm going to consent. Alda Lash.
No objections to moving to consent, but what is the process after we get the... But what is the process after we get the engineering studies back for prioritizing projects? Is that, is there a ranking system, or how do they, how does that work?
Yes, Ken Schroth, Public Works Director. So, basically, what they do, they, the ranking, I guess you could call it, is the highway, I'm sorry, the bridge sufficiency rating that they come up with, with each of these. And as a sufficiency rating drops, that makes it eligible for federal funds. So, as you see, the more high-priority projects come forward, they're coming forward with federal funds to match typically at an 80/20 split.
Okay. And then, we already have two projects underway, the New York Street and then some repairs to High Street Bridge. So, are they at the top of the list? And then, how do we?
It means that they qualify for federal funds. Usually, it's about a five-year timeframe between starting Phase One and getting to Phase Three construction. So, five years ago, those two projects had a low enough sufficiency rating to qualify for the funds and let us advance it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
Any other questions, comments? None? No objections, I'm going consent.
Two-four dash zero nine five four, resolution authorizing the city to accept a grant award of $18,503.76 from the FY25 Illinois Department of Transportation, a state and community highway safety net, national priority safety programs grant. And this is a reimbursement program focusing on pedestrian and bicycle safety throughout Aurora.
No objections, I'm going consent.
Two-five dash zero one one two, resolution approving an intergovernment agreement between the City of Aurora and the Aurora Township Highway Department for the resurfacing of Miles Road.
Consent.
This is a portion of the road that is township jurisdiction. The township would like us to do their portion when we do ours. And if funding does not cover that expense, then the township will reimburse the city for 100% of their portion.
No objections, I'm going consent.
Two-five dash zero one one three, a resolution approving an intergovernment agreement between the City of Aurora and Naperville Township for the resurfacing of Miles Road. Similar to the last item, the township has a portion. If necessary, would reimburse the city 100% of IDOT determines otherwise.
With no objections, I'm going consent.
And two-five dash zero one two zero, resolution approving the First Amendment and Second Amendment to the suncoat leases at the Aurora Municipal Airport. This is to clarify each party's responsibility if changes are needed in the future.
No objections, I'm going consent.
And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the Finance Committee report.
Thank you very much. Chairwoman Seville, can you give the Public Health, Safety, and Transportation Committee report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The PHSNT Committee met on February 11th and reviewed the following two items. Twenty-five dash zero zero nine seven, I'm sorry, twenty-five dash zero zero six nine, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class C specialty onsite consumption liquor licenses unofficially related to the application from Whitney's Love LLC at 302 West Union Trail, Suite A in Ward Six.
Consent.
This is the first type of license of this kind in our community that we're looking to approve. You have to have a service. You can't just go in there and drink alcohol. There's two servings limit, and there are really just only 15% alcohol in the drink. So, consent is fine. And the second one is twenty-five dash zero one zero one, a resolution approving the purchase of 31 United Shield brand ballistic shields and accessories from MES Lawman Supply of Deer Creek, Illinois, in the amount of $70,000. The goal is to, as you know, to be on a five-years budget cycle to make sure all squad cars have at least one shield. These shields will go to some supervisors. Some of them will be pistol-rated shields, and some will be rifle-related shields.
Consent.
No objection. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, and that's- I'm sorry, Alderman Buck.
Thank you. I just had a quick question for the officer on this.
Bill Riley, Administrative Services Lieutenant for the Aurora Police Department.
All right, thank you. So, it says the finance line item that this is getting taken out of. Is this from drug forfeiture, or what? It didn't say what that line item was. It just gave the, the number.
No, it's, it's operational funds that we requested and received in a, I believe it is a 2022 decision package that we-
Okay. Are, are we able to purchase the shields out of drug forfeiture? I know those are limited to special uses.
They are. And had we requested them through using drug funds back in 2022, I suspect we probably could have made that request then. In this specific case, we did ask for them using operational funds. I think if we had any needs going forward, we could certainly consider asset forfeiture funding as a funding source for this. Not having any of that documentation in front of me here, I, I would hesitate to say for sure that we could. But I believe, just off the top of my head, I believe that this would be an allowable use.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? There have been none. No objections, I'm going consent.
And that's the report from PHSNT.
Thank you very much. Chairwoman Garza, can you give the Infrastructure and Technology Committee report, please?
Yes, Mayor. We met on February 10th. The first item in the agenda is twenty-four dash zero five seven two, a resolution to award the Midbury Drive to La Jolla Court Water Main Project located on Ward Nine to H. London and Sansur and Water Inn in the amount of $428,280.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going consent.
Twenty-four dash zero eight eight zero, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to enter an agreement with the Great Lakes Urban Forestry of Patavia, Illinois, in amount $150,000 to conduct the tree inventory and develop an urban forestry magnet plan.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going consent.
Twenty-five dash zero zero one seven, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to implement Phase One of digital signage solution from Eperson LLC, Drytons LLC, and separate analogy solution for a total amount, for a total award, $189,125.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going consent.
Twenty-five dash zero zero eight nine, a resolution authorizing acceptance of the low bid for the Gulf Acquisition Group LLC for maintenance and repairs of the APD parking deck in the amount of $111,417 and a 10% contingency of $11,141.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going consent.
Twenty-five dash zero zero nine eight, a resolution awarding the 2025 sewer televising contract to Pipe View LLC, DBA Pipe View America, in the amount of $648,860.0.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going consent.
Twenty-five dash zero zero nine nine, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to enter an agreement with Chordring Asphalt Services Inc. to the amount of $1,650,000 for the 2025 citywide payment patching for water and sewer maintenance.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going consent.
Twenty-five dash zero one zero six, a resolution authorizing the purchase of Gulf Course Maintenance Equipment for Rangers Inc. using Source Well Cooperation Contract for $287.53.
Consent.
$53.
No objections, I'm going consent.
Twenty-five dash zero one zero seven, a resolution authorizing payment for AT&amp;T for up to $250,000 for the purpose of Kevin AT&amp;T relocated their, their facility within the City of Aurora, ROW, along Frontwood Avenue, Biltor Road, and Church Road.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going consent.
They conclude the meeting.
I'm sorry, Alderman Lash.
Yeah, no problem. I, I'd just like to put that one on unfinished business. I don't know if there's any updates from staff. There were a number of questions from several of the Alderman people.
Schroth, you want to step up?
I think they were from legal potentially.
Good evening. Ken Schroth, Public Works Director. I don't believe there are any additional questions since the last INT, but I'd be happy to try and answer.
No, there was just, legal was going to do some discussions behind the scenes. So, I don't know if there's been any progress or not.
They're researching it more. But that's going to be contested after, well, months after this is executed.
Understood. Thank you. No further questions, Mr. Mayor.
Unfinished.
Okay, we conclude the meeting with that item, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Chairman Warman, can you give the Rules Administration Procedure Committee report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Rules Administration and Procedures Committee was scheduled to meet on February 4th, 2025. However, there were no items on the agenda, so this meeting was canceled.
Thank you very much. That concludes the committee report. Let's go on to the next portion of the agenda, Alderman's Corner. Appears that we have Alderman Wani Garza giving an update today for Alderman's Corner. Alderman Garza.
All right. We want to start, well, about a year ago, I have my presentation. So, this is a year already. I can't believe it. Time goes so fast. So, this is the world boundaries with the new, when we have the new areas, a little bit from Ward Six, a little bit from Ward Three, and a little bit for Ward Seven. So, we have a different world tool like when we start. The first event we had was in the Easter egg hunt last year. So, we have 4,000 eggs for the kids. Kids really enjoy in McCarthy Park. So, we have this event every year and only after we renewed McCarthy Park since 2007. So, we do this event. So, the kids really have very good time. And so, we have, they have a lot of pictures with Mr. Bunny. So, they really enjoy the, this event. The other event we have with Alderman Ten Mesiacos and Alderman Tolliver. So, together, we have the shred event. So, this was in a parking lot of the East High School on 50th Avenue. So, we have a lot of people really went there with a lot of bags, with a lot of documents to shred and, and destroy in a safe way. So, really, it's a good, good event to, we pay for that. But really, the constituents really appreciated that. And even it was raining and snowing the day, so we have a lot of people went to this event. So, also, on April 16th, I bring to the church, to Sacred Heart Church, and also bring the Mexican consulate because I think it's a really need to bring the Mexican consulate for five days. So, the community, they don't, they don't have to make an appointment and go all the way to Chicago. So, this is a very neat, and so, they have very success event in the five days. They attend over 900 people. So, a lot of people renew the passports or have the visa or matrícula consular. So, this is very good help to bring the Mexican consulate to our area. The, April 21st, so we have also Dia de los Niños. This is another annual event on McCarthy Park. We celebrate in our Latino community. A lot of kids came to the Dia de los Niños. It's like a day of the day of the kids. And so, they really have raffles, a lot of sponsors provide bicycles and a lot of toys. So, kids really have very good time in this event also. So, world cleanups. So, Second World, I guess, so large. So, what we did, we divide into parts, the Second World. So, the first part is, and it was in June 8th. So, that one was from Union to, Union to the east. So, and that one, so we collecting 22.99 tons of garbage. Yes, so we paying $5,253.70 with the world funds, obviously. And the second cleanup in the same, the 24, was east from Union, west from Union to the rest of the Second World. And it was in September 28th. And that one, we collecting 15,079. So, with garbage, and we pay $5,116.83. So, all this garbage looked like it's a little bit less because the first one, a lot of people take advantage in going to the, the, the first area when we did it, and to the east side of Union. So, this is very popular event, and the cleanups. I remember, so me and the Shakira Harbor Ward Seven Alderman. So, all the time, we're talking about this because we have a lot of garbage before in the alleys, a lot of furniture in the alleys, mattress and everything, and empty lots. So, they have a lot, a lot of furniture, garbage. So, we're trying to have a solution to the problem we have. People, they don't want it paid for that. So, we, I think this is a very good event, and it's a good use to the money from world funds to helping the constituents how to clean up our areas. So, a lot of Aldermans do this too. 2024 resurfacing list ward. So, we have all the streets, we did it in the streets from blocks or two blocks, from street to street. So, you can see the list, like a one roof street from Front Street to Liberty Street. So, they did it like two blocks in there. So, all these streets was fixed, and, and alleys also, they fix in salt food front. Sidewalks removal and replacement sections. So, the sidewalks list is still big because we have a lot of, with a lot of snow and a lot of salt. So, we, we need to fix it almost every year, sidewalks and all that. So, we have another big list for 2025. So, this, this one was for 2024. And so, but we have very good shape so far on Second World with the streets and sidewalks. Also, we're working together with the Illinois Secretary of State. So, I bring the, the mobile unit on June 27th. Also, the Sacred Heart Church helped me with this. And they let me use the Simar Hall and that church. So, we put it, the mobile unit in our area. And it's another program and event that take the advantage of the community because they don't have to make an appointment, and they don't have to go all the way there or wait for the, the day they give it for going and try to fix the situations what they have with their driver's license. And that day, so we have 90 people because it was limited, it was only four hours. And but from the 90 people, 40 people have the real ID. And this was very nice, the real ID. I, I really let people know this important. And 24 people didn't take so much attention. They don't want to do the real ID. But in these moments, the situation we have in the, in, in this country, so I think to have the real ID is very, very necessary. So, I don't know if this year I, it's possible to have it again, the mobile unit because they have so much in the whole state. So, but that one was very good. A lot of people, like I'm saying, 40 real IDs, and the rest, they, they renewed the driver's license. And also, they have a lot of people who changed the, the addresses in their driver's license. So, welcome new businesses in Aurora and 24. So, we have a lot of people, a lot of businesses, the new Leilani, the, we have the Ribon Cardin and the Nova Driving School. La Quinta de los Reyes, the new patio. They made it, real nice patio. So, we have Gardenios, the place with, make their own homemade pizzas. So, we have very good new business in downtown. So, the driving school, Nova, it was a facility real good because they have a lot of instructors, also with different languages, not only in English. So, they have like 15 different languages in the instructors. So, everybody can go and renew. Some seniors sometimes have difficulties to have their renewal, the driver's license. So, they have to pass again the test. So, they helping a lot to do that. So, really, driving school, Nova Driving School is a very good, to came to our area in helping our, our residents. 2024 World Two Ice Cream Social. This is another annual event since we renovated Second, McCarthy Park. So, this one was very nice, all these years doing the ice cream social. So, we have a lot of sponsors to provide all the ice cream and the popsicles. But two years ago, we start with the recycle program, recycle dresses. I want to, the people have more motivation to do recycle. So, we give you prices to the first, second, and third place. So, they make the dresses, purses, anything they have in the imagination to create and recycle newspaper, paper bags, all what they can do with, with the imagination. So, this was very, very nice, and I think people really, really love it. Embolment with the community. So, we have the Fiesta's Partners event. We have also an West Yola Mexican bus car camp. So, it was the name of the, the location where the bus cars was located. So, this one was initiated by Mr. Benavides, Alejandro Benavides. And they invite us to be there. So, it was nice to finally give you the recognition to the East Yola bus cars, people living there, descendants from there, so was there. So, and also the celebration for the Mexican racing flag. This is a great event to racing the flag and also do the Fiesta's Partners. Patterson. For our community, it's very, very important, and the involvement was very great. Also, in the same, same weekend, so we have the Pioneer Breakfast. The Pioneer Breakfast was the nineteenth annual Aurora. So since I start being Alderman, so I started with the Aurora Hispanic Pioneer Breakfast. So we're recognizing the pioneers, the Hispanic pioneers in different areas. And also, we start collecting money from businesses, and also for my colleagues, to have a scholarship for students. So this is very, very nice to helping our students with the scholarship, because a lot of people, they have very good kids, and they have very good grades, but they afraid to go into the college, because they feel they want to have a very depth. So they know some are very expensive in three or four years. So they know, they don't want to have like a depth when they finish. So 2024, we're collecting twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. So all was awarded to our students. So the list in there is the businesses, they provide every single year, the check direct to the university. I didn't collect nothing. I don't touch no one penny. So all the checks going, they make direct to the university or the college where the student is. So all these businesses provide a scholarship almost every year. Also, I have a lot of support from my colleagues, and we have sponsors also for the event. Like this year, Alderman John Lash, Alderman Bill Donnell, Alderman Brandon Tolliver, Parra's Bakery APS Data Technologies, and Ballet Flon Clorico. That one was for the event. So really, what they cost for the breakfast, really, they support to pay that. And the Aldermans, they help with this, with the scholarship, was myself, because we, every year, we separate with the committee, five thousand dollars for two students, and they have to receive in Second World. The rest of the students, doesn't matter if they didn't live in Second World, is for all City of Aurora students. Alderman Tenmexiacos, Alderman McSeville, and Alderwoman Sua Bay, they provide a scholarship direct also to the students. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it, because I know without a career, without a degree, it's very hard to have our community be better. So my point is, they have to have a career, to have better salaries, and to elevate the quality of life of the families. So this is the students receive this past year, 24 scholarships. Alexander Contreras, Isaac Sebastian del Toro, Witsi del Real, Melissa Flores, Evelyn Gomez, Jasmine Garcia Malagon, Connor McHale, Ireri Miranda Gonzalez, Gina Montes, Isabel Nino, Sandra Lopez, Evelyn Lopez, Viridiana Perez Andrade, and Stephanie Serrano. All these students is the first time to receive a scholarship, because this is nineteen years already doing this event. And so the past scholarships are receiving, I already, I'm very proud, because I already have nurses, I have lawyers, I have people working in our city, like social workers. So they have the scholarship in these past nineteen years. So I'm very happy, and thank you so much to everybody helping to create the scholarship for these students. I'm so happy. So Aurora is elevate, like the mayor say, elevate to another table with more graduate people. This is the recognition what we did in the Aurora Pioneer Breakfast. So we recognize this past year, our authors was Jackie Ruiz, and Dr. Robert Renteria, and Dr. Alejandro Benavides. And the past year, so we're recognizing a lot of other pioneers, like we're recognizing the doctors of APD, Fire Department, the first businesses. So we're recognizing almost everybody already in the nineteen years, imagine. Also, was part of the Colibri Goals. The Colibri Goals is an organization trying to inspiring women's to be very inspiring in the community. Like, a lot of women, so the kids that are, the kids are already graduate, or they are already going to college. So then they don't know what to do. So they can go there, because it's never too late to start a career, or start something. This organization is very, very dedicated to women, especially women. So what they really want to do, something in life. So they can, they can be anything they want. So they invite me to be part of the, of this forum, to serve like inspiration for these women's, because a lot of women, they say they don't know the language, and they want to be more involved with the community, or be more involved in opening a small business. So, yeah, so we are part of that. It was very nice. Women's really, they don't have much work at home, and they don't want to get boring. So they can start anything they want, anything. Maybe they have the idea or the dream, but when they have the husband busy, and with the kids busy, and now the kids going to school and going to college. So they want something to do. So they can go to Colibri Goals, and they provide all this kind of careers, or small careers. It's just like inspiring others. So also, I help and be part of the Dia de los Muertos celebration. So right here, we have in downtown with Jose Torres, but also by Clara Diaz. So they have another event for Dia de los Muertos, because it's kind of so little bit east. So all the Broadway businesses get together in that area, in the parking lot. And so they do a lot of big celebration for Dia de los Muertos. And I'll be part of that. So to build a strong community to recognition. So by the end of, no, this was in November seven. So all the volunteers, because without volunteers, we cannot do nothing, really. So we can have ideas and have all these events, but without the volunteers, it's very hard, because we don't want it hiding people and have to pay. So in this way, like we did, is a recognition to all the volunteers for the whole year. So I provide, this one was in La Quinta de los Reyes Perio. So it was a launch and recognition to the volunteers. So really, really appreciate all the volunteers, because they are too much. They are very, very nice volunteers, very active volunteers, and this is nice to recognizing. Also, finally, we have the Posada. This is in the end of the year, on December 21. So again, we did it in Simar Hall, Sacred Heart Church, because it's where I belong, to the church. So we have the Posada there. So we provide some tamales, and some atoli, like our culture. And they have piñatas for the kids, some toys. And the kids really enjoy have pictures with Santa Claus also. So that day, also, I provide free smoke detectors and carbon monox detectors for seniors. So they call in the, when we announced, so they called to Alderman's office, and we have the list. And so they went there. So we provide the, the smoke detectors. And also, we provide this, this past year, also detectors for gas leaking, because a lot of people did not notice. So sometimes, it's very good to have the detector in the basement, especially when they have all the, the gas pipes. So these detectors, so we have it in the, in the event we have in Chicago. So they promote that, and was very, very efficient. So when they have some leaking, because we didn't notice, so until it's too late, because sometimes the heater, the water heater, or the furnace, so they have some leak, so they announce right away. So this is very good detector, and so we provide that to the seniors also. So for speeding, so we have some complaints for residents, people driving so fast, people not stopping the, and the stop signs. So we have the speed radar. So we move to different locations in the whole Second World, especially to the areas we have more complaints. So they move almost every two weeks, different areas. So I think the implement is, is very help, helpful. So still people with, with people trying, want to drive fast, they still drive fast. But I think this will help a lot, a lot to control the speeding. So also, on June 20, on January, on January 29, the 25, this is a little bit ago. So we have this actor, this author had the book, they call everyone Make Their Own Success. It's in Spanish only. So get in touch with me, because he want to donate some Spanish book for the Santori Library in Spanish, because Santori Library, they have the Spanish section, a lot of books in Spanish. So he said he want to donate books to the library. So we have the presentation in there. And this book is very, very, very nice. I read it, and it's good for people really want to make their own success, their own dreams. This is very inspiration, very good inspiration book. So also, on Monday, February 3, I have the first event, also for Know Your Rights event, because, you know, what's going on with a lot of misinformation about immigration. So, because the eighty-four percent Latinos in my world, I know some, some areas are the immigration issues. So I did this event to educate our people, how is, how is the way to correct, way to act, not be afraid. So yes, they give, we have some lawyers in there, and some people, they give instructions what to do. And very clear, the police, Aurora police, did not participate and cooperate with immigration. So this is the first day our Teniente, or Lieutenant, Lorena Hernandez was in the meeting with us. So people are very happy. They ask a lot of questions in Spanish, because she's the first Latina Teniente, Lieutenant. So they are very happy to ask all the questions about that. And she was very clear. The police in Aurora, they don't have nothing to do with that, with immigration. It's a normal process. If they have, if they looking for somebody as a criminal or whatever, so they have the fingerprints. So they don't have nothing to do with, with our police. So they, if they have the fingerprints, and they need the information for that. So our police, the only, what they do is to be, to be in peace, everything, you know, they don't want it. If the people afraid to do that, they don't have to be afraid, because the Aurora Police, they're not helping with that. They're not giving information to immigration or nothing like that. So we had the Know Your Rights event. So it was very successful, a lot of, a lot of questions. They have, this event supposed to be only one hour, and was three hours, because they have a lot of questions. Yes. And beside that, last night, we have another one in the library with Deputy Mayor Memo was with us, and I'm glad Memo explained there, everything, the process, what the APD do, the police do. And we don't have nothing to do with the immigration. And he was very clear with that too, last night. People was very happy. And so lately, the last thing, we went, we visited the Mexican consulate, the 13th, February 13th, we went there. They invite us to participate in this three hours workshop. Mexican consulate want to be clear, the situation they have right now. But also, they provide a lot of information, a lot of programs they have. It's not only for passports or matricula consular. So they have a lot of benefits to our co-nationals. I'm not even know when people, what Mexican or somebody die, and they want to translate the body to Mexico. So they have some help also, economical help. So they provide with the five hundred dollars to help the family with, with the cost. I don't know. So they explain all the kind of programs they have. And I was very happy, very, very informative event. So our Viviana Ramirez was there too with me. So we learned a lot that day, a lot. So what the Mexican consulate do for our community. And so this is why we have. So far, is what we did, Mayor, in the whole year.
Well, thank you very much. Clearly, you have a whole lot going on in Ward Number Appreciate the presentation. All right, that concludes Alderman's Corner. There is no need for a closed session. There's been a motion to adjourn. Alderman Franco, Second of Alderman Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.